Good afternoon. Welcome to the March 18th, 2020 City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission meeting. We do have a quorum present. Our next item of business will be to approve minutes of the February 5th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. We have those in advance, so if we have any changes or corrections to those, and otherwise, we'll need a motion to approve those, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next, we have our consent agenda, and we have several items here, so bear with me. First is the crossings of Three Rivers, Section 1, Phase 2. Final plat for 25 lots on 7.88 acres, Zoned PRD, located along Hospitality Lane. Three Rivers Rutherford LLC is the developer. Item B is Merrimott Springs, Section 3. Final plat for 49 lots on 13.57 acres, Zoned PUD, located along Attleboro Drive and Rucker Lane. Alcorn Properties, Inc. is the developer. And just to note, you do have revised staff comments regarding item B, and any approval of the consent agenda will need to be subject to these revised staff comments for item B. Item C is Chestnut Hill, re-subdivision of Lot 63. Final plat for one lot on 1.44 acres, Zoned RS15, located along County Farm Road. Believers Tabernacle, Inc. is the developer. Item D is Don Hall Subdivision. Final plat for two lots on 6.52 acres, Zoned RS15, located along Compton Road. Don and Sarah Hall, developer. Item E, the Patterson Point Land subdivision, re-subdivision of Lots 71 through 82. Final plat for one lot on 1.43 acres, Zoned RM16, located along Southeast Broad Street. Elite Development Associates LLC is the developer. Item F is Mankin Point, Section 2, Phase 1. Final plat for 39 lots on 8.07 acres, Zoned PRD, located along Hollis Drive. Mankin Point LLC is the developer. Item G, Lidle Industrial Addition to Murfreesboro, second re-subdivision of Section 8. Final plat for two lots on 2.43 acres, Zoned Heavy Industrial, located along West College Street, Scott Street, and Ridgely Road. John's Enterprises LLC, developer. Item H is Spring Creek Town Homes, Lot 1. Final plat for one lot on 66.9 acres, Zoned PRD, located along Asbury Lane and Portwood Drive. These are homes, developer. Item I, General's Landing, Section 2. Final plat for six lots on 1.85 acres, Zoned PRD, located along McChrystal Drive. Blue Sky Construction, Inc. is the developer. Item J is General's Landing Town Homes, Phase 2A. Horizontal property regime, plat for 13 residential units, and final plat for two lots on 2.2 acres, Zoned PRD, located along McChrystal Drive and McGruder Drive. Blue Sky Construction, Inc., developer. Item K, Shelton Square, Section 3. Phases 1 and 2. Preliminary plat for 37 lots on 14.67 acres, Zoned PRD, located along Blackman Road and Hope Town Way. Shelton Square LLC, developer. Item L is Shelton Square, Section 4. Phase 1 and 2. Preliminary plat for 62 lots on 12.75 acres, Zoned PRD, located along Hope Town Way and Bridgemore Boulevard. Shelton Square LLC, developer. Item M has been removed from the consent agenda because it qualified for administrative review. So that is the conclusion of the consent agenda. Do we have any of these items that anyone on the staff or on the planning commission that would like to have removed for further discussion? All right, ready for a motion.
Do you approve the consent agenda as presented?
Thank you.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're going to go off agenda here a little bit and skip around. We are going down to staff reports and other business for a mandatory referral to consider the proposed sale of assets of the Murfreesboro Electric Department to Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation. The Murfreesboro Legal Department is the applicant. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Ms. Jones, members of the planning commission. This matter comes before you as required by state law, specifically Tennessee Code, annotated Title 13, Chapter 4, Section 104, which I think most of you would know is the mandatory referral statute. Under this statute, whenever a municipal planning commission has adopted a plan for the municipality, as this commission has, the municipality may not sell its property until and unless the legislative body of the municipality has submitted the proposed sale to the planning commission for approval. So this particular matter relates to the sale of MED's assets and operations to Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation. That matter, or that sale, or the contract for that sale was approved in January by city council. In connection with that transaction, the city would be conveying approximately 10 parcels in fee, as well as some substation easements that it holds, as well as electric utility easements to Middle Tennessee Electric. There would be no change in the use of the properties, which would be, is often would be the matter that would be for the commission to determine whether the sale of the property and the proposed use of the property would be consistent with the overall plan. Nevertheless, before the city and Middle Tennessee can close on this transaction, the city is required to present it to planning commission for approval. So on behalf of the city, city staff and city council, I'm asking the planning commission approve this mandatory referral. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. Questions regarding this mandatory referral?
If there are no questions, I move for approval.
I'll second. Motion in a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate your explanation. Mr. Blomley, you also had another item of other business we needed to discuss.
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to bring to the planning commission a revised calendar for the 2020 year. In light of the current public health situation, we thought it best to reschedule our April meetings, push them back further in the month, so that we can honor the recommendations of the public health community and limit gatherings of people, and especially those that would invite the public to our meetings. So we are recommending that you reschedule the April 8th night meeting to April the 22nd, and the April 15th day meeting to April 29th. And I will go ahead and tell you that April 15th date is an important date, because that is for the sewer allocation ordinance. In discussions with Mr. Tucker, who, with Mr. Tucker regarding that sewer allocation ordinance, is that that date can be suspended by the mayor and pushed back in times of emergency. So it will not affect, it will not affect that drop dead date for developers to get site plans approved that will exceed the sewer allocation ordinance. It will just delay it a little bit, and developers will still be on track to hit that mark for those who wanted to request site plan approval to be able to exceed that. So we would recommend the changes to our two April meetings. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I just have one based upon your comment. So the delay in and of itself would be delayed to the 29th, not delayed indefinitely, is that?
Correct. As of right now, we are just requesting that you reschedule those two meetings. We, at this point...
I'm talking in specific with respects to the sewer allocation.
Right. It would be, it would be a delay until, until that particular meeting.
Okay.
It's not, not an indefinite delay.
Right.
It would just, I think the expectation has been set that they had until April 15th, and I think it's only fair that if we move the April 15th meeting, that that date slides with it.
Thank you.
So we're just making a motion to modify the April dates, or you, do we need to, for any reason, reference the whole calendar, or just...
Yeah, I think, I think either one would be fine, the draft revised calendar as it has been presented to you, or the motion to involve, regarding those two dates would be fine as well. Certainly, this is just staff's recommendation, and if there are alternatives that the planning commission would like to discuss, we'd be happy to do that as well.
Move for approval of the draft presented to us.
Second. Motion in second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. All right, now we're moving on to plats and plans. First item is Racetrack Site Plan for 16,371 square foot gas station, Convenience Market, on 2.8 acres, Zoned CH, located along Northwest Broad Street and North Thompson Lane. Racetrack Petroleum, Inc. is the developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, ladies and gentlemen, our first item under the portion of our agenda is for you to consider site plan approval for proposed racetrack. It is located on the corner of North Thompson Lane and Northwest Broad Street. This site is probably familiar to you, because twice in the past you've reviewed a site plan for this property. Because you've reviewed the, in the past, I wanted to bring it to you under regular business. The design team have been able to address most of staff comments, and if you make any approval subject to staff comments, we'll be able to make sure that everything is addressed. But because you have reviewed this in the past, I wanted you to be aware of the changes they're proposing. Initially, they proposed just to buy one portion of property, and it's the one directly on the corner, and then there was some discussion out about shifting the drive on Northwest Broad Street further away from the intersection. Since that time, they were able to acquire the adjacent property as well, which we think is actually better, that it'll be under one ownership. So both parcels that are on the screen before you are under contract, or I think actually they've closed on the property, so they own the property. And now they see that they're in a position where they have more property than they generally use for a C store and gas station, so they're proposing to add additional service to the site, and that is to sell diesel fuel. So if you do look at the site plan, and Mr. Blomley can change to that site plan, you can see that there is the C store, the locations have shifted a bit. In between the C store and Northwest Broad Street is a gas lane canopy for regular gas sales, and if you look to the north or behind the C store, you can see that there's an additional canopy, and that's for the diesel sales. It's the anticipation that this will not be for tractor-trailer type refueling, but more of your box truck or smaller diesel vehicles. Staff from the beginning has been very concerned with this intersection, as I know many of you are, because you're very aware of the congestion at this intersection. And so they are proposing to design it so that it would be for the smaller trucks that can maneuver a little bit easier. You can see that the access for the diesel in the back actually comes off of a right turn onto Thompson, if you're heading north from Thompson Lane, and then out to Broad Street. I believe that the location of their entrance on Broad Street is, will be approved by T-Dot if it's approved by you, so I think that they've pushed that back far enough to meet that requirement. The new gas canopy looks very much like the one that you saw before, the one in the front. And the store hasn't changed drastically. They have shifted the outdoor dining from the west side of the building to the east side of the building. We have asked them to explore some sort of connection to the city's Greenway system, which is located along the river here, and they're looking at places to do that. They've been able to address most staff comments really relatively quickly, but we did want to present this to you for your consideration, and implement, of course, any additional feedback that you may have. The design team is here, and they've traveled in from out of state and are ready to present the item to you. I think Mr. Taylor's going to represent them. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Chairman Jones, Matt Taylor from SCC. Ms. Green did a good job summarizing the changes. A couple of things I did want to point out, is we have set the site up so that it is a clockwise truck pattern, so all the trucks will come in off Thompson and leave off Broad, and so there's no left turns onto Thompson from trucks, and no left turns on the Broad from trucks. So I think that will help limit any impact. As Ms. Green said, we did an in-depth traffic study. We counted the type of trucks that are coming out through here, and it's the box trucks that are our primary clientele. We won't prohibit the large ones, but we did, we did not see a large number of them that came down through here, so. I will be, and we did make a connection to the Greenway on our eastern side. It is steps, just because of the steepness on that side, but we have incorporated that into our plan, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Can I just state, the, I still think that station across the street, the BP or whatever it's called now, has one of the best lighting for a convenience store, gas station that I've seen, and so I hope there'll be something similar. I don't know if all the newer stations do, have whatever that type lighting is, and I don't know enough about lighting to know what it is they did, but I still think it looks great in the evenings, so.
I've not paid a lot of attention to BP's lighting.
LED?
Yeah. So all of ours, I think, is directional onto the pump from, so hopefully you've visited the racetrack on Medical Center or 99. I think both of those do an excellent job of showing what this one will look like as well.
Okay.
Yes, yes. We've got LED. All of our stores have LED lighting as well, so.
Okay. Great.
So coming off of Northwest Broad, if they, if it were, you said you weren't going to prohibit 18-wheelers. If it were an 18-wheeler to try to get in there, it looks like it's going to be very difficult for them to maneuver to lot.
So that's one reason, they, the trucks, the large trucks will be discouraged by the design to not come in off Broad. They might do it once, the next time they're going to know to go to Thompson and hang a right into that entrance to go the correct way, because the way that it is right now, they would have to turn left, go between the pumps and the store and around, and so they may make that mistake once. They would not do it again. It's, it's very tight turns going through there.
Will you have signers?
We decided that way purposefully.
Will you have signers to discourage that? Because I mean, I see it being very difficult.
Yes, we will.
Okay. And coming out, if they came out going that way, based on that turn radius there, is that going to be very difficult for 18-wheeler to...
You're talking about leaving Broad Street?
Yeah.
Those are, we've designed those, I think they're 50-foot radiuses, which is the standard if you may encounter semi-trucks. And we know we'll have at least a couple of weeks, because we got to have somebody come fill up our tanks, and that's what they'll come in. But, so we designed all of those that way.
Okay.
Matt, can you, on this, what we've got on our screen, can you tell us, is there a right-of-way with respects to maybe a proposed bridge at some point on this side also?
So the, we've not been asked to dedicate any right-of-way, because I don't think there is any design.
Okay.
They have talked about a possible flyover.
Okay.
That would be along Thompson. There's a lot of right-of-way there today, and so today we think there's enough, but until there's an actual design. What we did do on the original plan was we took the Broad over Memorial, or Memorial over Broad Bridge, and kind of transposed it over. If it was an identical design, it looked like it fit. Our access onto Thompson would probably, would wind up being hindered, but at that point, it would probably affect our EDO. It would not necessarily affect the, the gas itself up front, so. But with the timetables that we're expecting, my client was comfortable with that being far enough out, that it would be okay with the store.
I think we've been very clear from the beginning that this is a pretty challenging intersection for this type operation. It's going to be high traffic, and it's, it's got challenges because of the rating of the intersection that currently exists there. Would it not be advantageous to just go ahead and dedicate the traffic on Thompson Lane to be, I don't think it matters if it's left or right in, but I think that intersection should be right out only, forcing those people who are deciding to go out through that intersection or that exit to go right. And the reason I say that is if they're, they're going to block the intersection if there's traffic stacking on Thompson Lane, and if they were to, the way the traffic is flowing across the back of the property and back out the side, and if they come back out on Broad Street, then they can go any direction they want through, through a signalized intersection. So it seems to be more of a flow if they only allow right out on that Thompson Lane side.
We would prefer to have the full access just for the passenger cars for the 22 hours out of the day that are not at peak time, or whatever that number is, Councilman Smotherman, because mo, you know, minus an hour in the day, morning, hour in the evening, or hour and a half, whatever those times are, they'll be able to make that left turn if they're a passenger car. We were very sensitive on the tractor-trailers, that's why we flipped the rotation, because we knew those had the opportunity to back anything up at any point in the day. We would prefer to keep the passenger car's ability to turn left there, though.
Yeah, I just, I think that any passenger car that's on that lot has the option, same option as a truck would have, of leaving that lot and going through a signalized intersection without having to cross that traffic on Thompson Lane, because when, you've basically got a bottleneck that's about to occur on Thompson Lane with the two lanes that are going out towards Segal High School from there. And those, those cars are watching the traffic of where they're staggering each other, trying to, to work their way into one lane there. And I just think that adding another distraction of a car potentially coming to go across that intersection, personally, I just, I think you're creating a hazardous situation on a, that doesn't have to exist when you've got an option of getting out of that lot and using a signalized intersection. It, go on.
If you do a bridge over at any time, at any point, you're going to have that situation anyway.
Yeah, correct. And with the bridge, we feel like it's far enough out that...
No, we understand, yeah, so.
We've discussed that access with our traffic department, and he feels that the full access at that entrance will be self-regulating, and that it won't be an issue during peak times, because they won't go that way, but it will allow someone to come back towards Murfreesboro and make a left off of Thompson Lane to, onto Broad Street.
Any other comments, other than that, or anything else?
I see, well, you could have Broad Street, come back this way, isn't it? When the bridge is built.
So I don't mean to be, keep hitting a dead horse, but, or beating a horse here. So if this, if this plan comes to fruition, do they have enough, do they own enough land to be able to have an exit on Thompson Lane, based upon you, you know, what you were talking about earlier, if it was the same bridge proposal? So it depends on the design, but I would anticipate that it would probably wind up being like the, what was the road that came out on Broad, on the Memorial that got closed, kind of got knuckled off.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
I think it's generally about the same distance there, but without knowing what that design looks like 100%, Mr. Halliburton, I can't say.
Yeah.
I know this is a tough deal, because, you know, you've got current estate property, and there's some value in that, and then, of course, we're talking about things that may not happen.
Correct.
But we've been talking about happening for a long time. There are other sites in town that I think, come to my mind of already challenging intersections, and when we look at adding, you know, this kind of project too, that you would say on the surface, I would say on the surface, that that probably doesn't make a lot of sense based on the problems that we currently have. But knowing that, you know, there's a lot of discussion about that bridge, I hate to agree with Councilman Smotherman, but I don't particularly like the, the left turn out of there either.
[laughing]
But I know from a, from a site design standpoint, you make great points from the standpoint that you don't want to cut it off from the rest of the time that it can be used, but I'm struggling with it too, but I shared that with you initially when it came through, so.
Well, I, I think that some of the issues that we see there are obviously people trying to access the BP on the other corner, and I think with another option, obviously people will have preferences. We can't overcome that necessarily, except by serving them better. I think this will hopefully alleviate some of those options by providing people with a going-home type access versus having to cross traffic to get to the other option. And so hopefully it eliminates some of those crossing maneuvers that otherwise people don't have a choice if they need fuel at this particular intersection.
Do you know, Matt, are there other diesel providers in this area, or would this be the only diesel provider?
Um, I cannot.
Because that may impact the traffic pattern also.
I cannot think of any other diesel providers. We were not anticipating, everything that we were anticipating getting was, was passed by existing today, and so we weren't anticipating a draw for those. We particularly studied this intersection.
There's not diesel in that area anywhere. I'll be excited to see it there.
It's going to extend past the federal, isn't it?
Matt, I believe your developer would like to...
Yeah, hey, good afternoon. I'm Alan Bell with Racetrack. I just wanted to kind of piggyback on Matt's comments about the, the access on Thompson. You know, it, when it's not peak hour, I think the left turn is important. It gives a way to go back and go east on 41, so that we don't have people going out the right in, right out, and trying to cut over four or five lanes of traffic to be able to make a U-turn. So I think when we looked at it, I think it actually, you know, creates an outlet that's safe, and for any of the larger trucks, it's, it's one way through there, so, you know, they are, they are going to need to go out on, on Thompson with the right in, right out, but it does eliminate, you know, somebody, like I said, trying to cut over a bunch of lanes of traffic and do a U-turn.
I have a question for maybe, maybe staff or planning commission who have been here longer than I have. I see that the BP across the street has a right in, right out only at that location. So it seems to me that it might be that staff recommended, or planning, planning commission may have recommended that at an earlier time for the one across the street. So to me, it seems as though that we should maybe do the same thing, or offer the same thing here, as I'm sure that was probably a safety precaution when that was put in. I echo the comments of, of Councilman Smotherman, that I'm concerned traveling through there myself, being able to take a left out on that.
I would say that you would be able to, it would be very difficult to go all the way across to make a right onto Thompson, or to make that right to go onto Broad, but to be able to get into that left turn lane to come back towards town wouldn't be as difficult.
Can a U-turn be made at the intersection of Northwest Broad and...
I honestly don't know.
Okay.
The right in, right out there because, on the opposite side, because of the left turn lanes, that's part of the reason for that restriction there?
And that makes sense, but is there not a right turning lane for the same basic principle on, on this side for the racetrack?
They would be able to get into those left turn lanes there, whereas the left turn lanes don't give them a way to cross on the other side.
Okay.
And I can speak with our traffic department again and get their input, and see their feelings as well. And both of these accesses do need T-Dot approval as well, since they are both state routes.
May I ask Mr. Taylor to come back to the podium and just kind of... May I ask Mr. Taylor to come back to the podium and just kind of, there was a site plan for this development approved in 2019, you know, talk about what that site plan looked like, what its accesses looked like, and what is different about this site plan?
So, the access point on the Thompson Lane is identical, I mean, it's within a foot or two. I think the only thing that we changed there was to address comments that we got from TDOT on the original plan, which was to square that up, 90 it up a little bit, and maybe adjust a radius onto their street. The access coming off Broad is actually, I think, about a 75 to 100 feet further away than it was on the original plan, because there we were straddling the property line and making a shared access, and so here, we were able to move it as far away from the intersection as physically possible. And so, and we would, and again, we anticipate the same sort of vehicles to leave out of this exit as we did originally.
So your, your 2019 approval did contain the, the left out?
It did, it was a full access, the same as what you see here.
Is there a way to, I know, doesn't totally take care of it, but could you have signage on that left lane, at, you know, the exit there to state, you know, exit into left turn lanes only, or something along those lines, or maybe put the little triangle island that makes sure they only go, you know, left and they only go right? I'm not very good at explaining, if I could draw for you up here on the screen.
I, I believe there's some signs, and we have to work with the traffic department to make sure they're okay with this, talking about, reminding people not to block the intersection. The sign's only as good as the people are reading it, but-
And even those little, you know, dashed lines like we have at the bridge at Broad now, that dash out from that left turn lane just directly into the first left, the closest left turn lane, like, access only into the left-
I'm afraid that TDOT would, because they typically reserve that striping for public, public turn of movements, and so I don't think they would allow that out of our private entrance.
Well, before we go any further, Matt, let, let me just make it clear. I like the project, I think it's a good project, I, I think the diesel fuel service is fine, but we are dealing with an F-rated intersection here. And we had a large transportation company that we basically told no, because we were afraid that they'd only make the intersection worse. In this particular case, there is a right-in, right-out only directly across the street, except further from the intersection than this one is, on Thompson Lane. And so therefore, it's my feeling, if we required them to do that, that this should be required to do the same, and my vote will be contingent on that. So it, if, if you want my vote, it has to be right-in, right-out only, because there's certain intersections that I go through in Murfreesboro, that I just shake my head and go, why did they approve this? And, and once you've done it, you've got to live with it from this point forward. And my, my fear is, is I'm just afraid that my gut is saying, this is not a good place for a left out on the Thompson Lane, and that's just my gut saying it. So, that, uh, my, so, so you know where I'm at, before we start on it, I think it's a great project, but, but, but I do think that for my vote to be in favor of it, it would have to be right-in, right-out only, and that's, that's where I'm at.
Before we go forward, I think most of us have came, have come from Thompson Lane and turned on, or come from Broad Street and turned on, but you making that turn, you're, you're pretty much booking it. And if you have a car jump out, come out, it, it is going to be a hazard. I, I would agree with Eddie on that.
I did want to just comment on the, the BP across the street, their right out gets them to the light, that's, that's the major difference. So we don't have that a right out, just access north on Thompson, which, yeah, there's, there's some traffic there, but that's, that's the main difference of being able to, to get back to the light, to head back east. I mean, I think, I don't know if there's ways that we can, you know, try to come up with-
Your right out on Broad Street carries you to the light, the only thing it's preventing is people to come back towards town-
Correct.
-from your light.
Yeah.
It does do that.
Correct.
But I would imagine that very few people that are going out of town to begin with, that would stop at your business, would want to cut, turn around and come right back towards town where they just came from.
Well, correct, well, the passenger cars may turn left and go in there and then come back out and go as they're coming into town. I agree that trucks heading out of town, or anything big, is going to continue heading out of town, they're not going to turn around and do that, but we also want to capture some traffic that's coming towards town. I mean, I think if, you know, agreeable, if we can try to, to work with staff, if there's some type of signage trying to, to eliminate the left turn during the, the peak hour AM, I mean, I think that's something that we, we could definitely consider, but, you know, for all the other times when it's, you know, it's open, we definitely, you know, would like to have the opportunity and then address it, you know, if it becomes an issue.
So back to Kathy's question earlier, or comment, I guess there's no way to put a dividing concrete curb on the, on the far-left lane, so that they wouldn't have the ability to go, you know, trying to make a right-hand turn on Thompson Lane? Follow me?
We wouldn't want them to be able to come all the way-
That's what I'm, yeah.
All the way over.
So could you, could, could you put a cur, and it may not be that you could do that, but a curbing in the, you know, the right-hand turn-left lane, so they can't get across?
I don't, you're talking about how it in Thompson Lane?
Say that again.
Are you saying in Thompson Lane?
Yes.
I don't think you'd let us do that.
Okay.
I would be surprised if they-
Okay.
I think those, I would, I don't see that-
Okay.
I will just say, the BP does have that additional access further down, where if,
for the people that are trying to turn left, and they can't exiting here, they go beyond the call wash, or I don't know if it's still a call wash, and turn left from there. So you, you do have the ability to go both directions out of the BP, because they have an additional access point on Thompson Lane.
Further up Thompson Lane. And if this property went further up Thompson Lane, close to where that was, I would, I would probably agree that it would be okay.
Yeah.
Whether they could acquire that property or not, go that far up, if they wanted to do that, that's up to them, but as it's presented right now, I just-
I can, I can tell you that, and I don't know what TDOT's feeling on having a right-in, right-out here is, more recently, they have been asking for not to have right-in, right-outs on five-lane-plus roadways, because it gives people the room and the flexibility to abuse that, even if you designed the island itself correctly. Broad Street's different, because you've got the median and the guard rail, and so it prevents people from abusing it. Here, we would not have that, it would turn into, they have to physically be turning to the right, looking over their shoulder if they want to abuse that. So we have, that's been, TDOT has come back with that over the past couple of years, because I think they've started to see the abuse, and they would rather have somebody looking straight ahead and be able to look to the left, versus the islands. I think we actually got that feedback on Memorial Boulevard at a couple of projects up there, over the past several years.
Attracting trucks to that intersection is starting to create a somewhat of a good idea.
I will say that we've, TDOT has already reviewed the original exit point, and was fine with the full access there, from a TDOT perspective. They've not seen this new plan, but they did, they're in the process of issuing the paperwork for the bonds and things like that, for the original plan. We, if you're okay with it, I mean, we're hearing the concern, you know, I, I think everybody would agree that it's a couple hours out of the day. If, we would be happy with a deferral, to give us the opportunity to sit down with traffic department, to see if there's any acceptable options to them, that would help in those key times of the day, and leave the flexibility for the other 22 hours or so out of the day, that, that it is an acceptable left turn. And then just, then come back next month. I think we could come up with an answer, and it'd be a pretty quick meeting, I think.
At this point.
Just to make sure I understand what you're saying, you're talking about a, a split situation, where there are sometimes it's okay to turn left, and sometimes it's not?
Yeah, just see if they've got any ideas to address that particular concern.
I do think it, and that's what I was getting ready to ask, if it would be acceptable for a possible deferral, because I do think there's something, we obviously approved this once before, and our traffic department has approved it, but it, we are all very obviously concerned with it today, so I don't know, you know, there's something going on there, that I think we just need some, you know, some more of the experts to weigh in on it, and I think if they can meet with the traffic department and, you know, see what they can do to come up with helping us through what, what we're struggling with here, so.
We'd be happy to do that, so, come back next month at the 29th meeting.
Move for deferral.
Second.
Motion for deferral in the second, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all very much. Okay, our next item is Salem Landing, Section 2, Master Plan Amendment and Preliminary Platte for 245 lots on 63.19 acres, zoned RS6, located along New Salem Highway. Salem Land Company LLC is the developer. Mr. Ware, welcome.
Welcome, thank you for having me. So this is a redesign of our earlier design for Salem Landing, some differences on this current plan that's before you today, there's some street names are different, and some replacements are different, as well, some of the amenity locations have been changed on this proposed site plan. Staff recommends that this pl- preliminary platte be, be approved, subject to all staff comments.
Planning commission members, this, this came before you in 2018 or 19, and y'all approved the master plan, and because of the changes, that's why you're having to review the master plan amendment again?
Has there been a density change by this?
No, sir, the, all the lots still meet the RS6 zone, or the RS6 minimum lot size, there, there's no kind of zoning request. If they, if they've added a lot or two, I, I don't recollect, there may be, there may be two or three lots difference, but the primary differences are with regards to the location of street stubs, the, some changes in the roadway network, and also shifting the amenities around. I know when, when y'all reviewed the master plan previously, the, because it is a RS6 subdivision with limited open space on the lots themselves, y'all were concerned about wanting to make sure that the, that they had appropriate amenities, and our design guideline speaks to that as well, and they are, they are proposing an equal amount of amenities, they're just kind of shifting things around a little bit with the, with the new design. I think we feel comfortable with the, with the plan, and would recommend any approval be subject to staff comments.
If there are further questions, I'll make a motion we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item is 717 and 719, Cresslin Avenue. Site plan for 10 single-family attached dwelling units, townhomes on 0.70 acres, zoned RM16, located along the west side of Cresslin Avenue, south of Division Street. Eric Bloom is the developer. Ms. Currie?
Thank you, Chair Jones. This is the site plan for 717, 719, Cresslin Avenue. It's a combining of two lots for residential development for 10 single-family attached dwelling units. The site is .7 acres and has one access location on Cresslin Avenue. The development will consist of 10 two-story, two-bedroom, multifamily dwelling units. Building material is brick on all elevations, does have rear patios. There are a few outstanding staff comments, that staff will continue to work with the design team to resolve prior to planning commission approval.
Ms. Currie, would you like me to bring up the-
Yeah, if you would like to see the elevations, Mr. Taylor did provide those for us, they come up for you now. As you can see, they are all brick. It puts some, some very good design elements on all, all four elevations, actually, to give it a little bit more visual char- character. Applicant is also here, if you have any questions for them.
Questions or comments from the planning commission? If there are none, I will move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item is Tommy Car Wash. Site plan for a 5,200-square-foot vehicle wash on 0.99 acres, zoned commercial highway, located along Memorial Boulevard. Tommy Car Wash Systems is the developer. Ms. Currie?
Thank you. Our final item under Platte Some Plans portion of our agenda, is for you to consider a project located along Memorial Boulevard. It's a, a proposed automated car wash that's about 5,200 square feet on property that's just under an acre in size. It is located along the eastern side of Memorial Boulevard, on Highway 231, and just west of Milton C. Christian School, MTCs, if you are familiar with the area. This property was the previous location of a self-service car wash, so if you remember the kinds that were popular several years ago, where you got out of your car, you sprayed it, and you wiped it down with a brush, that has since been demolished, and it looks like it was demolished in 2012, and has been vacant since that time. Yeah, applicants are proposing to construct a new automated car wash, which is more of the model that we see today, where you sit in your car, and it goes through the wash, and then you have the option to get out of your car and vacuum it. Staff has reviewed the site plan and has been able to approve it administratively, this would qualify for administrative review and approval, but the applicants have not demonstrated that they meet minimum standards, particularly for the design standards. They wish to come to you today to request to be exempt from the design guidelines, to not comply with those design guidelines, that's of course not within staff's ability to approve. And they, Mr. Baum, they can bring up the images of the proposed car wash in the site plan? We did make some comments on the site plan, but I believe that they'll be able to address most of our comments. This is the proposed structure, which is similar to one that was approved several years ago, and is located on Franklin Road. It is staff's recommendation that this not be approved, because it does not meet minimum standards. And one element of our concern, in addition to not meeting the standards, and there are several, it's not just color or material, but it's most of the standards outlined in the design guidelines, one of our concerns is that we have consistently applied those standards to other car washes, and I have a PDF that'll just show you what they look like- and I have a PDF that'll just show you what they look like. I think I'll have to ask our Cable Department to go from Matthew's laptop to our laptop. Perfect. And you probably recall these, since most of them have been to Planning Commission, but I just wanted to show you examples of what we've reviewed and approved. There are different types of architecture, but they've all been able to address the staff comments, so this first one is Primetime Express, has not been constructed, but it's been approved Northwest Broad Street, further, or closer towards somewhere farther out of town. And we have seen, this is Mr. B's car wash. I think this elevation shows you what it looks like. There's a couple of those. We have quite a few wash and rolls, and this is, here you'll see a couple images of wash and rolls that have been approved. Wash Me Express, I believe, this is the one that's going out in front of Kroger on Rutherford. And so those are the ones that I could find in the last two years that the Planning Commission has reviewed and approved, so I just wanted to give you some context for what we're looking at. If you have any questions about the staff comments, I'll be able, I'll be glad to answer them, but I do know that the applicants wish to present their case to you and for you to consider the matter, and if you have anything further for me, I'll be glad to answer it.
Ms. Green. So, can you, you said there's, there's multiple items that they are, the plan does not meet the minimum standards. In addition to the color, I'm taking into some of the glass or base and?
Sure. So the design guidelines have a lot of prescriptive elements, saying this is the minimum to design to, and one I think that you're familiar with is with a defined base, and it gives a specific height for that, so the building doesn't have a defined base. And I brought it just in case you asked, so I could remember. And there, and most of the responses to my staff comments were, were that they just wished to not comply or not provide that information to me. There's some standards that prohibit corrugated metal, and so they have that on the building. There are some standards that say the primary material needs to be brick, cast stone, natural or synthetic stone, and they're proposing to not comply with that. There are some guidelines on colors, primary, secondary and tertiary colors, and they're proposing to not comply with that as well. The design guidelines also talk about breaking up long walls, and so they're requesting to not comply with that. There are some minimum, there's some void area calculations that we look at, and this is for all uses, and so, rather than provide, I think that they're wanting to not provide with that.
Mm-hmm.
The cap is to be established with accordance or molding, and I think that's something they're proposing not to do. I believe that they're able to screen the back of the parapet, so I don't think that's really an issue.
Thanks.
And so, basically, they've just asked for blanket, blanket, leave us out of the design guidelines, and have opted not to redesign the building to meet those design guidelines.
All right.
Those are the ones I identified.
Well, we look forward to hearing from them then. Thank you, Ms. Green.
You're welcome.
So we have somebody from Tommy Car Wash that's gonna come up and address some of the comments.
Thank you, Chair Jones, members of the commission. I don't know everybody, so I'll introduce myself. I'm Steve Steele with Huddleston Steel Engineering. I have with me today also Mr. Scott Finlay, who is the owner of this car wash and the one being built out on Highway 96. He has with him from Tommy's corporate office, Mr. Robert Fries also. I have a thumb drive that I would like to try to use if I could.
Yeah, we generally don't accept these at the meeting, normally, before we get a chance to screen them.
Okay.
It's been, that's generally our policy.
This is an exceptional situation we're all in, that's why I brought it, just in case.
Well, just go ahead and make your?
I'll tell you what we're doing. I think, thank you. The intention is certainly not to skirt the city's design guidelines. The intention is to try to revise what Tommy's corporate image is, what they want to portray, to something that blends in with other things here in Murfreesboro. If I could have shown you what their normal car wash looks like, it's got a lot of bright, vibrant colors, they have scaled that down. If you want to see what this proposed car wash would look like, you can look at the one that's opening actually tomorrow, I believe, out on Franklin Road. That was approved, I believe unanimously in this body, a year, over, a little over a year ago, I don't believe it was two years ago, might have been a year and a half. The owner is proposing to build the exact same building, and that's kind of where we are.
We could hand those out.
Sir, our legal department told us we weren't allowed to give you paper, but he certainly can hold it up if the computer or if the image is on there. So I don't want to violate our policy that was sent to us from our legal department.
I can walk toward the front and show you if you want it, is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
On the, on your left is the normal Tommy's corporate car wash, if I can see that. On the right is actually a picture of what's being constructed here in Murfreesboro on Franklin Road. This is another side view. Again, on the left, you'll see much more vibrant colors, and on the right, they can tone down This is a view at the exit end, coming out, versus what they would normally do. And this is a view on the side where they have the vacuum stations. I don't know if you can see, but normally the canopies are red and these are gray. So they have attempted to use earth tones where they can and still try to maintain their corporate image. It's a very, it's a big change from what they normally do, but I don't think they want to build what looks like a retail structure, a normal retail structure for the car wash. Is that okay?
Thank you.
And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions. I'm not the architect of record, most of you know that, but I'll be glad to attempt or if somebody else can answer the question.
Were most of these exceptions that they're asking for made on Highway 96 when they made that proposal as well?
The conversations for Highway 96 began before we adopted design guidelines, and during that transition period, we always erred in favor of any client, so if we even began speaking about a project before design guidelines, we didn't really apply them. And so when it was brought to you, it was pointed out that, no, it doesn't meet design guidelines, but because the process of reviewing it had began before then, that we wanted to err on the side of the developer as opposed to asking for them to change it wholeheartedly. And that one, I think, is a zone to plan development. It was Victory, Victory Station, maybe? Kingdom Ridge, Kingdom Ridge Plan Development, which had some specific architectural standards established by the Swanson family when they created that plan development.
I think, I think that may have been rezoned to commercial highway.
Was it?
Yeah.
It was a part of Kingdom Ridge before?
Yeah, and then it was, then it was rezoned.
So we did not apply the design guidelines to that one.
I know you all probably were not able to be in here at, for our earlier discussions, but we also did not approve something else that we had approved last year in this meeting for various other reasons, so. And we have, thank you for the reasoning on why we approved what we did originally, even, obviously, very modified from the original building that they would have requested. Even when we didn't have design guidelines, we did not approve anything near what the corporate image would have been, so. Comments, questions? Yes, sir.
How's everyone doing?
Just go ahead and cite your name, please.
I'm Scott Finlay.
Okay.
My wife and I are the owners of the franchise. I remember every day, I've gone through this for two years, the, the design guidelines were implemented, I believe, December of 2017, is when they went into effect, and we took this to planning in 2018. The design guidelines were implemented prior to us making the application supplemental on the first one. I specifically remember that. And it's a prefabricated building, so the symmetry of the roof, it can't be symmetrical. That's one of them. The bright and vivid colors, we, we dressed it down to, to meet, to comply with the city. So we've done everything we've, we could. The previous Planning Commission approved this unanimously. We have the support of the previous Planning Director, Donald Anthony. We, we care about our community. We've already have committed to give close to $100,000, just in the Blackman area, to the schools. We'll continue to do that wherever we go. We have spent, we've cared for this piece of property like it's our child, and the type of service that we're gonna provide in our building is top notch, it's first class. We're very proud of it. We truly are. And we're just seeking to get the exact same elevation approval for the second. We bought the entire, needed a multi-unit development agreement with the franchisor, my wife and I. We own Rutherford County for this, this franchise, and our intentions are to build five of these, three of them in the city. Our second one wants to be on Memorial, 1810, we already have that property secured. Our third one, we'd like to have on Church Street. And then after those three, we'll see where else there's a need for one. But it's important that we, we can't do anything as far as the prefabricated building. It is what it is as far as the, the structure. But we've heard nothing but positive things from the community, and we're gonna do everything we can to provide the best car wash, the best service, and we, in our opinion, it's a first class, and we add value to the community and to our town. We're not trying to bring anything in here, and from what we've always been told from the previous one, the design guidelines are not meant to keep something like this out of our city. That's not why they're, they're there. They're not meant to keep something like this out. So that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Other comments, questions from the Planning Commission?
This was a tough one for me, and I say that because I was involved with the first one when we talked about it a little while ago, and the, this particular project, I rode by the one that they've currently completed out on 96 and looked at it yesterday afternoon, and it's an attractive building. It doesn't stand out, there's nothing offensive about it, there's nothing, you know, when, when I ride around Murfreesboro and I see a tattoo parlor or something like that, in most cases, I'm, I'm not gonna say I'm offended by tattoo parlors, but, but most of them, I think, are probably not exactly the design that I would look for, and I'm not picking on them as a group, I'm just saying that their buildings generally don't meet the criteria that I look for. Same probably applies to dispatch account, pipe tobacco shops and stuff like that. And I'm not making any friends with this comment either, am I? But the, but, but having said that, the building that they've got out there is very attractive. I think they've donated a large sum already to Blackman High School for their turf, is that right? $8,000, so, so they are plugged into the community. It's, it's not like a, somebody who's just trying to benefit and take the money somewhere else. So, so I'm, I'm struggling with this one because the, the main reason is, I eat at Hardee's on Memorial Boulevard under normal times, when the restaurants open and you go in and sit down. But I eat there every morning with a bunch of old guys, and we look straight across the street at the property that this is proposed on. And when I look at that property, it, it hasn't been attractive for a long time, and here's somebody coming in who's willing to develop that property, invest in that property, improve the conditions of, to provide a service that's really not that available in that area. I think that there's a demand for it. If there wasn't, I don't think they'd be building it there. But the, you know, the, the question of whether or not this is a good location for it, I think I would be more concerned about whether or not it interferes with the sewer capacity. If you're making a case off sewer capacity and the amount of water that goes through car washes and stuff like that, I would have, I would have a bigger concern with that than I would be as to whether or not this project will improve the appearance of that property in that section of street in the city of Murfreesboro. And the, I just, I really do think this is a nice family-run property that would be nice to have in that neighborhood, and, and it's, it's my neighborhood I'm talking about, so it's not like I'm trying to push something in on the Church Street, the other side of town from where I live. This is something that's close to my home, so. You know, we're not dealing with the gateway when we're talking about the northern side of Murfreesboro Memorial Boulevard either. I mean, we're not quite to the point that we say everything has to be built to gateway standards, and, but I get we've got guidelines.
Or design guidelines.
Yeah, I get we've got guidelines, and, and I think that we need to understand that we have those, but we, we make exceptions regularly for things that go into the gateway even. And so, I guess the question is, is this a, a place where we might consider deviating from the plan? I mean, it, I would hate to say we turn away a really good business that would not only help add to our tax base, which would help, help keep our property taxes low, and, and I think there's a lot of good reasons why we need very successful small businesses in Murfreesboro, and I think this, this is one of those, so. I'm probably one who leans closer towards approving it even though it doesn't meet the guidelines.
I can see the unfortunate situation on buying a franchise where now you're faced with some different guidelines than you were with the first one. Sounds like with the timing, you, you were giving, given the approval to move forward even though it didn't meet, which I think is a good effort on behalf of the city and staff, to allow that to happen. I hope at the time you would have known, we're getting it on this one, but there might be some changes on down the road with future, knowing that the guidelines would be much more established by this point. So I hope that, that was considered and there was communication about that. I'd like to get into a little bit more of the specifics on what's not being met here. If I could ask a few questions, maybe Ms. Green would be the one that can help us here. So I wrote down the items that you listed off, and I heard defined base. I look at the elevation and I can see some indication of defined base on the building, so I'd like to see if anybody else has any comments about that, or if you would like to elaborate a little bit more where the item K points to the base.
Sure. The design guidelines say that this type of structure needs a minimum of 24 inches of a defined base, and so my staff comment to the design team was identify that 24 inches and show me where it is on the plan, and the response was, we want a wholesale exception from all design guidelines, we're not gonna give you a response. I think though, just looking at the image, what's on the screen is the front and back, the sides don't have that, I suspect don't have that defined base. I can't tell, the information that I requested wasn't provided. And then, let's see, I guess I can go through. I didn't spend a whole lot of time picking out everything because I knew that they wanted just a wholesale exception for this, and any future buildings probably would come back and ask for the same thing. So I didn't spend a lot of time, and they didn't come back to me with solutions to the, the problems identified, so I really just thought, okay, well, we'll take this Planning Commission, since it's sort of out of my purview anyway. Some of the design standards are that the exterior elevation Some of the design standards are that the exterior elevations, I think, probably, let's see. I mentioned that there needs to be, the material needs to be predominantly brick, stone, or... I gotta turn my page, my notes. Brick, cast stone, natural synthetic stone is a primary material. The secondary material can be ephesus, split face or ground faced or polished face concrete, architectural metal panels, composite panels, cementitious siding, fabric awnings. And so I asked for breakdown of the materials, which I didn't get. And then the tertiary materials can be metal coping, flashing, and trim, wood and cementitious trim. Smooth face concrete masonry block, which isn't shown, is prohibited, as well as corrugated metal. And they're proposing corrugated metal instead of architectural metal. The roof, I wanted them to, really what I wanted was them to respond, here's our standard, tell me how you're meeting the standard. And all the responses, it was, well, you just don't want to meet the design guidelines, so I don't have a lot to go off of. I do know that I was, I asked about how they are establishing a cap. I try to be as lenient as possible in architects' interpretation of the design guidelines because I think it's important to encourage diversity of design. And I think we've done a good job of making sure not everything looks the same. I guess I feel a little put in the middle because we hold the line with some other businesses who definitely didn't want to do this sort of thing. We do require that for ground level office and other commercial, which is the other commercial, that facade area incorporate a minimum of 35% window or void. And that can be setbacks. We ask that, the, oh, here it is. We ask that any long walls be broken up and that they can make some changes in the plane so they can push something out or pull back something back or do some optical illusions. We also say that the building needs to be broken up every 40 feet, and the height needs to be taller than the width. And so those are some of the specific standards that we have. We say that visible sloped roofs maintain a similar pitch, and I think they probably do that. So the 40 feet, it says, "The facade of the building shall be divided into distinct sections no more than 40 feet in width, and each section taller than it is wide. Large expansives of walls are prohibited, and that windows, columns, and other elements shall be used to reinforce the verticality of the facade. And that you provide appropriate masting for intended use by stepping back building height, varying visual height, varying front plane of building, and then, of course, if it's a large development, providing those breaks." We do talk about infill or adaptive reuse, that they consider the building composition and rhythm to complement existing neighboring buildings. And that is more infill development, and this is slightly, that a little bit of infill quality to it. So those are some of the things that I found initially.
Okay. I also wanted to, I meant to address earlier, I know the challenges with a prefabricated building, and that that ties into your financial and business case, and that that comes in a kit, and it's really difficult to make modifications. So I'll just, I'll comment just on some of the specifics. But I do feel like it sounds like you were asked to kind of respond to some specific things. And if you'd given some of the answers, which look here to me like they are met, that we wouldn't be having to maybe go through some of the level of things that are not clear here. So to me, it seems like there needs to be, the items brought up should be addressed specifically. And I know it takes time. But if you can address that your base meets 24 inches of the requirement, then it becomes, in my mind, a non-issue based on the design that I see here. I know it's subject to everyone else's opinion. So the base, the corrugated metal is probably the one that sticks out to me the most as up for discussion. If it's a specific material that is not recommended to be used, period, that's one thing. If it can somehow qualify as a metal panel because it's an accent or an architectural element, it takes it to a whole different level of discussion. And like Eddie said, he's seen it, he's, you know, comfortable with the way that was used in the design. And you might, if you could just explain the use of it and that it's an accent rather than a building material, it again may be an item that could be agreed upon and, you know, not need further discussion. I think the brick and material looks to me like in general it meets. But if she's asking, if the staff is asking you for percentages to show proof, I think it's worth taking the time to show that. You know, the red color might be something that is brought up by some. But again, because of the other toning downs of the colors that you've done on the rest of the building that is not the prototype, I think I would probably be okay with the red. It pops your entrance. We have other buildings in the city with blue across the Honda dealership. You know, there are exceptions that have been made for that. I think that addressed all the things that popped out in my mind from the design. But I just think we were asked to provide something, and if we could just give that effort, you might take a pretty big step at getting closer to where you need to be with this.
Well, again, one real quick question. Have you seen the booklet that they were trying to show us?
I don't know what they were giving you, but I have seen the prototype, and I've seen the changed building.
The current building that they built on 96, you've seen it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. Finley, come back up, please. Thanks.
And while he's coming up, one thing I did want to point out is that regardless of the circumstances of what happened with their first building, I think it's staff's obligation, our responsibility, to apply the standards to each one. And then they do have the, they do have the ability to come to the planning commission and request relief. So I think we have been trying to fulfill our obligation in administering the standards that had been previously adopted.
I think that the challenge for us, though, is we're asking for wholesale relief when we haven't went through the process. So we need the applicant and the staff to go through the process and then ask for the relief that needs to be done, as opposed to a wholesale relief.
We would like that very much.
So, Mr. Finley, I think, you know, it's pretty, I think what we've learned from the discussion here is that staff was asking for certain things, and very likely, you all meet all of those things, if not not all, a lot of those things that they were asking for. And the easy and the right thing to do would have been to respond to the request that the staff had.
We responded twice to try to satisfy, to try to give her satisfactory answers. We responded once.
So did you respond to the 24-inch base and explain where your 24-inch base was?
I believe so, yes, we have. We responded, we initially responded to their questions after we submitted it the first time. Those responses weren't satisfactory. So we came back, got Mr. Steele, got with the architect of the building and corporate. We responded the second time, the best we could. There's some things that, because of the prefabricated building, but we responded to her twice. And we can't seem to get anywhere. We can't satisfy her in our responses. We did respond twice, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Two times.
So if it still wasn't satisfied, do you...
There's certain things that, as far as the prefabricated building, that, there's, we, to the best of our ability, we've responded the second time, as best to our ability that we could. And this has been going on for nine months now. We had, we had, we put the contract on this building. Six months, we had to get an extension because we've been going through this process at the staff level for nine months now. Just to this point, we've tried, we've tried our best, I promise you, two times.
If we had this with every applicant that comes up here, and we had to listen to all the people that make, you know, try to work with our staff and don't work with them because they're terrible to work with, or they don't respond, or they don't answer, or whatever, then I might kind of feel for you here. But we have a huge agenda that, we know that the staff is very responsive, that they have been able to work through things with every other applicant that we have today. And so far this year, I can't remember when the last time we had something that, we had someone that couldn't work with our staff on something. And especially if we think we might hopefully see five more, or five total of these in our county, of which we may have three within our city. We very much appreciate your investment in our community and the fact that you are also being a good citizen in a lot of other ways. So we very much want to work with you and want this to work out. But I think we're not where we need to be right now today. I think there can be some responses to the staff comments in such a way, if they meet the guidelines or have a reason that, for whatever reason, you don't meet one here, don't meet one there, you should have been able to respond to that and help her understand that.
We did to the best of our ability. Our goal was to try to get what was already approved unanimously from the previous commission, and the design guidelines were already in place. We were trying to get the same elevations approved for a consistent brand and a consistent product. And I'll add to that, one of the responses we received from Ms. Green, she basically sent us a picture of one of our other Tommy buildings, I believe it's in Chattanooga, or Knoxville, almost identical. The only difference was, it had blue accents instead of the red. And she asked for us to use that design, to use that for inspiration, basically telling us it was okay to do it blue, but not red. And we're just, we, we've exhausted, and I think Steve's better to answer that, we've exhausted our efforts and tried to please and satisfy the questions that she's had. And we're just, we've done everything we can. And I might, maybe Mr. Steele's better to answer that.
You can sit down, and we'll have further discussion and decide what we're going to do at this point. I kind of made my thoughts known. I feel like we have a, I mean, it seems like this is something that could have been worked out. And yet we're sitting here having to, you know, have this back and forth today. It's not our normal course of action here at the planning commission, so.
I just want to clarify that I do think it deserves to be looked at with a different level of expectation because it is, you know, well beyond when the design guidelines were accepted. So there were some exceptions at the time with building number one. We are faced with some new challenges for you today. But I think it's a good opportunity for anybody else to chime in on if there's anything here that they really feel strongly about that they don't like. Now's the time to share that so that they can go back and talk amongst themselves about, and with staff, on, you know, how we feel about it. Eddie and I have both kind of given our opinion. Just to summarize mine, in general, I'm okay if there could be some, I'm okay with the corrugated if it's presented in a way that does not just directly go against a guideline. If it's just that we do not allow corrugated metal, then let's, that's, again, it's coming on a prefabricated building, but that is a piece you could modify. I know that comes with expense, but it could be done if it's just a pretty black and white rule. But if it can be looked at as an architectural accent, I'm okay with it.
And I guess part of my challenge right at this moment is the fact that we're not allowed to look at a booklet that has been prepared for us to look at because of the conditions that society has today that we're facing that are very unique. Otherwise, we would have a booklet with a picture in front of us that shows us the difference between what the normal building that they use is and the building that they've used in Murfreesboro that's an attractive building. And we would have that physically in front of us to look at it and compare it to say, this is exactly what they're presenting. And apparently...
But we're not supposed to be comparing to what their normal prototype is. We're still supposed to be looking at what our design guidelines is and see if what they're presenting to us meets our design guidelines.
Right, right. And that's what the planning department's responsibility is, I think. I think our challenge as commission members is to determine whether or not we need to deviate from those plans. And there's nothing chiseled in stone about what the planning department says. We need to take their advice, and we need to weigh it heavily against the public's opinion. If somebody comes up and says, hey, I want to build something that's completely out of character for this area, then, you know, absolutely, we need to listen to what they're saying. If they bring a project that's forward that is an acceptable project for the area that they're asking for, you know, I just, I think it's a bad precedent to go into just telling everybody, no, you can't come to Murfreesboro, and you can't start a business here because you don't fall into our criteria. And we don't, you know, I don't want us to be that un-business friendly to start telling.
I don't think we've at all done that.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that we have, but in this particular case, I think that it needs to be reviewed. It needs to be looked at. And I think whether we defer it and allow it to go back and let it review it again, kind of like we did with the previous issue, I think that would be acceptable. But I don't think it would be acceptable to turn it down because we can't look at the booklet because there is a presentation that shows this building, that makes it very clear to each one of us that this, the building they're proposing on building is not their prototype building that they would normally build. And we do that with McDonald's, we do it with, you know, several businesses that have designed buildings that say, what's the new car place that we just opened up?
Carmax.
Carmax. We made a huge exception, I think, on the front of their building with allowing the blue and the yellows. Honda, that we've referred to, we made a huge exception with the use of the blue on the front of that building. And those were gateway. So I think in this particular case, Memorial Boulevard is not gateway. And to say that, you know, there's, to say we throw the guidelines out, I'm not saying that. But I do say that there probably are exceptions that we need to look at. And I think this is one that not only are they showing us a booklet, but there's also a building out there that every one of us had the opportunity to ride by and look at this week if we wanted to look at it and say, is this something that's good for Murfreesboro? And can we afford it? As always, my criteria is on how I'm going to vote on something. And in this particular case, I think there's a need. I think the property has been undeveloped for so many years that, to be honest, I'm tired of looking at the undeveloped lot sitting there in the middle of a commercial highway section. And I think it would be an attractive amenity to that area. I don't think it would take away from anybody's business in that area. So, and so I would minimally say we need to defer this and let it go back through the process again and see if they can work some of the concerns out. And then if there's one or two, three exceptions, then we can evaluate as whether or not it would be a good idea to do it based on those two or three items rather than having a laundry list of things that appear to even on the prototype that they meet as far as base and stuff like that, so.
So I'll make a comment. I kind of agree with some of the things that have been said. I'm kind of a numbers guy, though. I think, and what I mean by that is, in my history on this planning commission, there's been a history of compromise, whether it be by the applicant or by staff, or what this planning commission felt like there needed to be a compromise with a particular design. So here's what I'd ask you to do, is based upon the items that don't meet the city's minimum guidelines, like the base, and it's this 24 inches. So how far off are we? I mean, we can visualize what we can see, but based upon these guidelines, how far off are we not meeting a particular guideline at all? Or yes, we are, by the way we look, you know, by the way you look at it as the applicant? Or we're 50% there? And I think that would give us, back to Eddie's point, being able to see a picture, yes, that helps us. But at the same time, these guidelines were put into place for a reason. And so in order for me to make a compromise, I got to know how far off are we? Are we just totally not meeting it? Which, back to Jennifer's comment, no, I don't think we're there. But we don't have the information we need to see how far off we are with respects to those guidelines. I know it's an eye test thing, but it's also a matter of what are the facts? And that would be very helpful to me. And I'm not for denying it by any stretch of the imagination. But I do think I need to know that information so that I feel comfortable with whatever compromise we come up with.
I'll contribute as well. I think this is unique for me in the sense that I would probably most always defer to staff on recommendations and certainly the guidelines that we put in place. And I appreciate the discussion because it's helpful, as I think, through this. But I do think that if there was not already some precedent that we had accepted this, and this design was accepted previously, because if I understand correctly, this is a replica of the building on Highway 96. I think if I were a business owner and I was bringing something back that was a replica of something else, I might have certain expectations of that. Now, I'm not suggesting that our guidelines can't change, and that we can't adjust as we go, and people should adjust their expectations. we go and people should adjust their expectations, but I do feel like it's not unreasonable to, um, to expect that, uh, a similar result would be gained through this process as was gained through the last process. And so, um, I very much appreciate staff holding the line and, and the commission holding the line. I think that's what we're supposed to be doing and I think that helps everyone. And I think if this were a single project that we're coming through today, I probably would not say much and just let it filter out. But I do think we have to stare at the fact that we've got one of these already and that, um, you know, the applicant has made some, um, revisions to a very stocked sort of product based on an investment they've made in a franchise, and that was acceptable. And I understand it's hard to, later on, decisions we make about how we do things and why we do things, but, um, I, I don't have an opposition to it, but, but does not mean that, um, the planning commission might not feel different.
So I'll, I'll weigh in just a little bit too. So from my look at the project, it's a fine project. It's a, it's a nice, uh, project. My issue is, is we can't set a precedent where someone can ask for a wholesale, um, approval and then bypass the process. We have to go through a process, and for us to make that decision, we need to know the differences. And for you, I think you guys need to go back and figure it out, figure out a way that you can tell us the differences and then we can make the decision. It, it might pass, or it might not, but it, I mean, from looking at what you see here, it probably would, but we can't make that decision without you telling us what the differences are. I'm not in a position where I'm going to vote for a wholesale approval of anything. And that's my comment.
I'll step in and, and lend a comment. I'll echo Commissioner Russell's, uh, comments on the, on the wholesale move. Uh, I think if we just know what the different, uh, metrics are between, uh, what's approved, what's not approved, I think that would help us make a, a decision a lot quicker.
I think it could have been an easy, uh, could have been just a chip mark today. Instead, it was made very difficult. So we'll take a motion. I think we know where we're going.
I'll make a motion we defer. I say that.
Motion to defer in a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you again. Our new bu, business today, we have three items. The first is a zoning application for approximately 1.44 acres located at the northeast corner of Gold Valley Drive and North Rutherford Boulevard to be rezoned from PCD to PRD. Rutherford Corner, PRD, Masters Homes. Ms. Kerr? Sorry.
Thank you, Chair Jones. And this is a zoning application for property that is located at the northeast corner of Gold Valley Drive and North Rutherford Boulevard. Garrison Creek runs through the west side of the subject property. The property is currently developed, undeveloped and zoned to PCD. In 2008, the applicant was, applied for and was approved for a PCD zoning to include a two-story office building with surface parking, but since that time, the property has remained vacant. The applicant now wishes to rezone the property to a PRD. The proposed PRD would consist of an eight-unit townhouse development tentatively named Rutherford Corner. The gross, uh, density would be 5.56 dwelling units per acre. The development would have a direct single access on Gold Valley Drive. The proposed development would include three buildings. The primary materials would include stone, uh, brick, and cemented siding. Setback, um, of the development would be 35 feet on the front facing North Rutherford, 15 on the front facing Gold Valley Drive, and 20 feet on the sides and rear. Amenities would include 0.9 acre of the 1.44 acres as open space and detention area, and a formal open space consisting of a paper plaza with a grilling station and bench seating. The surrounding zoning includes an RS-10, single-family residential district to the east and to the south, or RM-12 multifamily residential district, 12 units per acre, to the northeast, and RS-15 to the west across Rutherford Boulevard. Adjacent land uses include Wood Chase Single Family Residential Subdivision to the east and the south, and the cottages of Willowbrook Multifamily Residential Development to the north. The proposed development would include a 12-foot type C buffer along the northern and eastern boundaries with, uh, shared with the Chase Wood Subdivision and along the western property line. Future land use map, the 2035 Comprehensive Plan recommends that parks is the most comprehensive appropriate, appropriate land use character for the property. Staff's not sure why this recommendation was made in the future land use map. Could possibly be that, uh, the building was, uh, in existence of Garrison Creek on the property. The development is more consistent with the auto-urban general residential land use character. The characteristics of auto-urban general residential include detached residential dwelling units as well as attached residential dwelling units with compatibility and open space requirements, less openness and separation between dwellings, front yard consumed by driveway and off-street parking, and a density of 3.54 to 8.64 dwelling units per acre. The proposed single-family residential, uh, attached use in this PRD is not consistent with the parks' land use character. A copy of the pattern book has been included in your agenda materials, and the applicant will be available today to answer any questions and give a, a slide presentation, and, uh, the planning commission will need to schedule this matter for a public hearing, and we suggest the date of April the 22nd.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kerr.
Ms. Kerr, Matt Taylor of SEC. I don't have a PowerPoint today, we'll save that for the 22nd, but, uh, we did try to mimic the architecture of the attached units in Stratford Hall, which is directly across the street. I'm not going to say they match identical, but we did try to get some inspiration, I think I heard earlier, from that development and, uh, carry over here. So, uh, I think this would be a nice, neat little niche to finish out this neighborhood. I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
Just a comment, um, shows you how old I'm getting because I remember this original application in 2008, because this is near my house, so, uh, anyway.
I remember that too.
And y'all are old.
Yeah.
I think Mr. Alaberton's aging a little bit at the name.
All right. We need to schedule a public hearing.
Maybe we schedule a public hearing for April 22nd.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item B is a mandatory referral and right-of-way abandonment to consider abandonment of a portion of tightened circle right-of-way and the abandonment of drainage, detention, and utility easements. Huddleston Steel Engineering, Inc. is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
May good afternoon, everyone. Um, the purpose of this item is to request the planning commission to discuss the matter and schedule a public hearing. Um, the attached map depicts the location of the right-of-way abandonment that's requested as well as, uh, the drainage and drainage easement. The planning commission approved the preliminary plat for Marketplace at Savannah Ridge as well as the final plat. Both of these, um, included a condition of approval that this be, uh, completed and that quick claim deeds executed and recorded prior to recording the plat. Uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The applicant's representative is here as well, Bill Huddleston, and, uh, thank you.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Rush or Mr. Huddleston? I need to schedule a public hearing.
I'll move to approve it, uh, to schedule a public hearing for April 22nd.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item C is a zoning request for a, a planned signage overlay district program book for New Vision Baptist Church for approximately 30 acres along North Thompson Lane, West College Street, and West Northfield Boulevard. New Vision Baptist Church applicant.
Hi, I'm Teresa Stevens, administrative for the city. Today we're looking at application to, for a planned sign overlay district for New Vision Baptist Church. The zoning ordinance allows planned sign overlay districts in keeping with the promotion and protection of public health, safety, comfort, convenience standards set forth by the city and to rent the use of new, of new and innovative signs on large, atypical developments. The city encourages the design and development of signs that are higher quality than would normally be under the sign ordinance. To be eligible for a planned sign overlay, the development must consist of 20 acres or more in size and be zoned appropriately. The subject property is located at 1750 North Thompson Lane, um, property owned by New Vision Baptist Church. The parcels, I knew I was not seeing well, my glasses. The, consists, the property consists of three parcels, the largest being 24.15 acres. The parking lot addition that was recently approved at 3.55 acres, an accessory parcel of 2.33 acres located south of the largest parcel, for a total of 30.03 acres. The property is zoned RS-15 and has an institutional group assembly use which was permitted by a special use permit approved by the BZA. Institutional group assembly is permitted for a planned sign overlay in any zone. The purpose for the planned sign overlay is to allow the applicant the opportunity to present a cohesive plan for the entire project that addresses everything from permanent signs to temporary signs. The proposed sign overlay would allow additional freestanding signs on the property of building entrances, canopy signs that extend beyond the canopy surface, string lighting and outdoor, at outdoor assembly areas, and increased size for routing signs at parking lot intersections. I have provided additional information located in the packet that compares what the zoning ordinance currently allows, or the sign ordinance currently allows, and what the planned sign overlay would allow. Representative from New Vision Baptist Church, Regina Thompson with Visioning Studios, will make a brief presentation. Um, after discussion, SIF recommends a public hearing date of April 22nd.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Regina Thompson with Visioning Studios, and New Vision has hired us to do a master plan. As part of that master plan, we always like to go and worship with them on Sunday and see how things function for them. And when we did that, uh, as a new guest, one of the things we noticed was how poor, um, knowing what door was the best door to enter by. And, um, when they asked us what they, we suggested for our first phase, we said, we need to, you need to improve your entry sequence and how you get people to the center of your interior access. And so with that, um, we have developed new entrance, um, sequences both on the exterior and the interior for the project. Some of that involves signage, and so that's what's kind of developed us into coming to you all for the planned sign overlay. And, um, uh, so the main things that they will start out with will be trying to develop those entrances, and so we've got some canopy signs, pillars, and, um, that, that kind of takes care of the entryway. The other thing that's kind of, um, developed out of the new West Northfield Road development and the Children's Hospital is now, what was their back of their building is now very visible to the public. And they have a pre-engineered metal building back there that is now going to be very visible to everyone. So we're suggesting doing a mural on that to improve the appearance of that building.
Any questions before we schedule it for a public hearing?
Just a comment. I know in the past, we've, we've looked at Amazon, we've looked at St. Thomas Hospital, we've looked at several places where, uh, traffic flow can be made better and safer and easier to understand, and, and, and I think that's exactly what you're asking for, and I think that's a good idea for us to do that when, uh, the need arises, so. Uh, if there's no other comments, I'll move for approval, or, or move that we set a, uh, April 22nd public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. All right. That concludes our new business. We've had, uh, one item under, one or two items under staff reports. Do we have any other staff reports or any other business?
I, I do have, I do have one more. I wanted to, um, you know, normally we bring our, our items of new business before you to schedule for public hearing at the day meeting, and usually there's several weeks of separation between the day meeting and the night meeting. We got Summitt's last Thursday, which would normally put things on the April 15th agenda to be scheduled for the May 6th agenda for the night meeting. So I figured, go ahead and get out, get out in front of that and go ahead, uh, and we just have one item to schedule at this point for May the 6th. Um, and that is a, um, amendment to the West Lawn PUD. Uh, Ms. Green got that application in last week and she's working on reviewing it, but it will, we'll be ready for the May 6th Planning Commission agenda. I put the, uh, the, uh, map on the screen before you and asked that you schedule that for a public hearing at our regular meeting, which is scheduled for May 6th and has not been moved. So that's, that's our regular, um, May meetings. We would ask that you vote to schedule this. And just to, some background, there's a use that is proposed to go on this property that is, it's kind of on the borderline of medical office and hospital, and so it's kind of a belts and suspenders approach. Um, the applicants are wanting to amend the plan development to, to include the use hospital as a permitted use in the area that's in the hatch marks on the map before you. So really, it's a very, it's a very, it's very simple, um, uh, plan development amendment, um, and it's really the, the crux of it. So, um, if you would feel comfortable in doing so, we would ask that you schedule that public hearing for May the 6th.
And about how many acres is that hatched area?
Oh, gosh. Um, let's see.
This is a general ballpark.
I would say, I would say maybe 10 or 15, probably closer to, yeah.
I was just kind of wondering. Hard to tell when you're looking at it.
It's a lot bigger than I thought.
Okay. All right. So we would like to then have this scheduled for a public hearing on May 6th. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. May 6th it is. Anything else?
No, ma'am. That's all I have.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. Then we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.